Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Today is the March 1st, 2018. Special public hearing for the Hillside Lake Park District. Would everyone please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Counselperson Cassidy.
Present.
Counselperson Franco.
Present.
Counselperson Marinero.
Present.
Supervisor Delciano.
Present. Okay, so tonight we're here for only the public hearing. So do I have a motion to open the special public hearing for the Hillside Lake Park District?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, public hearing is open. So tonight we will be discussing the abolishment of the park district. We have had many meetings with the residents from Hillside Lake, and we have gone through a couple different phases of or different plans that we're proposing. Tonight, our engineer will be showing a presentation on the proposed plan. So the process will be, we'll have the engineer give the discussion on the plan. Then we'll have discussion from the public, comments from the town board and the public. And then we will close the public hearing, hopefully, tonight. So with that, engineer, would you start the presentation?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we're gonna turn off just the...
Just one set of lights, maybe?
Yeah, that one's good.
Okay, and just bear with me, you know, I know a lot of people here, maybe most people here are familiar with the history of the lake and everything. You know, we've been talking about it for a number of years. But there's also people that are not familiar out there that are watching tonight or maybe here in the audience. So I know some of it's gonna seem redundant from what's been discussed in the past, but I wanted to have just a broad-stroke presentation for everybody who might be watching, so. So we'll start with a little brief history. Hillside Lake was constructed pretty much as a summer community back in the '30s. It was a kind of a shallow lake to begin with. The dam was constructed later on, we think sometime in the '60s. An earthen berm was constructed, kind of dividing the lake into the main lake and a swimming area. In 1992, the Hillside Lake Park District was created at the request of the HOA or the residents there at Hillside Lake. In 2002, it was listed on a New York State DEC list of 303D impaired water bodies due to phosphorus. In 2015, actually December 30th of 2015, the town received a water quality improvement grant from the DEC. 2016, town received notice from the DEC regarding the condition of the dam, required inspections, and actually an evaluation that the DEC wants done. 2016, town was awarded DASNY grant for vegetation removal. In 2017, Hillside Lake community residents voted to dissolve the park district. And today, we're considering accepting Hillside Lake as a town-wide passive recreation space and making improvements to the lake. So this improvement plan has been like a work in progress for a little while now. I'll go over some of the main points of it in no particular order. We are going to, you know, maybe we'll start around the perimeter. I know it was brought up at a prior meeting as far as trying to install deep sumps. That's been discussed for a while. We did bring, put that back on the table in addition to the deep sumps around the perimeter. We're gonna be putting a bar screen in, which will help, hopefully, reduce amount of sediment that enters the lake. That's represented as these little, little orange dots in your handout. Then the little blue dots in your handout, they represent just like kind of a modified rain garden, just a little mini wetland at the end of each outfall that would be constructed in the lake to, again, help deter nutrients from getting into the lake. We're going to go through a couple of cycles of freezing or draining the lake so that the vegetation freezes and we can remove it, you know, mechanically versus a hydro raking process. We think freezing it over a couple of winters and going in there mechanically and removing it would be more effective. We're also going to remove some sediment that's been entered the lake through stormwater system. We're going to fill in a swimming area with material that we have to test pit around and find good material to fill in the swimming area. One of the main reasons we're doing that is because of the condition of the dam. DEC, right now, we're kind of, should have already done an engineering analysis to determine what steps need to be to restore the dam. That analysis, the estimate is $40,000 just for the analysis, never mind the cost to reconstruct the dam. So plan is just to fill in that area and make it, you know, suitable for some kind of passive activity. We're gonna install a outlet control structure, a new outlet control structure, which would be right here at the head of this riprap channel. That's gonna outlet back to that existing channel. That'll all be stone lined, okay? So there won't be any valves. There won't be any need to go out when there's heavy rain and adjust anything. The outlet will be designed such that the water can, you know, rise and lower back to a median elevation. I know there's been some concerns in the past about high water table around the perimeter of the lake. We're gonna correct that with the installation of the structure. We're going to install an artificial wetland. That's part of the Renewage DEC stormwater grant. That's going in this area here. And that's gonna treat, there's two ways that it's measured. Actual volume of water entering the lake, it treats about 25%, but the way it's designed with some aeration, it's gonna be included. It should ultimately treat about 50% of the volume of the water over time, about 50%. I think I've got pretty much all of that covered. And then, and then the one other thing we're gonna attempt to do is do some regrading in the lake. We're gonna try to find a home for some material. And, you know, over a few years, try to at least deepen certain areas of the lake so hopefully we can promote, you know, fish living in the lake. But that's gonna take a little time, but that is the intent to try to... We know that 10,000 yards of material that can go into the swimming area, but hopefully we can find a home and over time, you know, remove more than that. So this is a little detail of what the micro-wetland basin might look like. Basically, it's just an elaborate rain garden. We're gonna need to get, you know, permits from the DEC for not only this, but for much of the work that we're proposing. But this would be another measure to help control nutrients entering the lake. And then in the deep sump basins, we're gonna install baffles, which the next slide will show. But it just, again, it's a means to try to remove as much sediment as possible before it enters the lake. And that's, it's a pretty simple item, just basically a plate with holes. And there's been a lot of studies how big the hole should be and where it should be placed. And we don't have a final design, but basically we're gonna use the concept here to help maximize the effectiveness of the basins that we install. This is a, more or less, a cut-through section of the, of the main... The main wetland filter, that's part of that Renewage project. The interesting thing about this is that it's, it's almost like it's a true filter in that it can be backwashed over time. You can see these vertical pipes. There's one here, for example, that goes down to the bottom. So the idea is that the sediment eventually makes its way to the bottom. This is not my laptop, so I'm having a little bit of... Maybe we can requisition one supervisor for that.
You're doing fine.
Here we go. Okay, so I think that's where we left up that bar screen. Okay, I'm not gonna try to use a pointer, so... But anyway, there's these vertical pipes. Now, see, I didn't even touch anything that time. But anyway, the pipes that go down into the wetland, the idea is that over time the sediment accumulates on the bottom. You can bring a vac truck in, hook onto these pipes, and basically wash it out, backwash it, and not have to replace all the stone and the gravel and everything in that wetland, okay? So that's the idea behind that. And then in conjunction with that, there's gonna be these floating little micro-wetlands that'll be out in the lake, maybe a half dozen or so. And the idea is that it draws water from other areas in the lake. It brings it back into that main filter where it gets treated. It'll be an airlift, through airlift method. Then we have our tentative schedule. If I'm still in order here, because this is budget, okay?
Number 10.
It's just a little finicky.
It's the most important one.
It's basically the budget here, about the deep sump basins. Remove the concrete spillway, demo the remaining portion of it, fill in a swimming area, the outlet control structure, install the riprap channel, remove the 100 yards of sediment, remove vegetation throughout the lake. And we're gonna do that through the DASNY grant. Gonna be a lot of permits and follow-up inspections associated with this. We have contingency fund, stormwater quality project, which I've got $800,000 in here. That was the bid that we had at the time of bid. We think potentially we can, we can do it in-house with the highway department. We have to confirm that the grant can be used to, you know, reimburse the town for that, but hopefully we'll be able to do that. We spoke with the designer just the other day, and he feels that the highway department should be able to accomplish at least most of the work. The microfiltration basins, we have to extend the lake drain. And from that total, we then minus out the grant from DASNY. We minus out the DEC grant, so the net cost to the town, you can see on the bottom line, somewhere around $625,000. And that'll be done over several years. So we have a tentative schedule. The first thing we have to do is finalize the dissolution of the district, which we're in the process of, hopefully. We have to apply to the DEC. That's gonna take some time for permits. We need to meet with them, find exactly what permits are gonna be required and try to obtain those permits. The plan is that by next winter, we'll start with our first drain and freeze cycle and followed in '19 by the first go-around of removing the vegetation. So I'm not gonna go through all things on the schedule. You have it, you have it in front of you. But the idea is to complete it by 2023. We were originally at 2022, and we then went back and added the deep sump basins and those grates. So that costs, you know, more money, so we gotta kind of stretch it out because, you know, we're trying to allocate so much per year. So that's why we went from, from 2022 to 2023. In addition to the improvements to the lake, we've talked in the past about trying to implement a septic law for Hillside Lake. The watershed, I should say, to be clear. I know there's been a lot of talk about the condition of the septics and out there. And in another area of the town, I'll just move ahead. East of Hudson, septic law exists up in the Stormville area and the DEP watershed. And that was enacted, I don't know, five or six years ago. So basically, we would look to, you know, provide a law or implement a law very similar to that, which requires, you know, periodic inspections and maintenance and gives the town enforcement measures if people don't comply. This is just a little slide that, for people in that watershed that wanna do their little part to try to help. You know, the sediment that enters the lake through the stormwater, you know, it originates somewhere. Some of it's from along the road. Some of it could be from people's yards. And, you know, we would ask that, you know, people try to do their little fair share to try to minimize the sediment. So, you know, we're showing in a couple of slides like a little ditch that's rutted out between a couple of homes that you can see the roof leader dumping into. That eventually goes to the street, eventually makes its way into the storm drains, eventually makes its way to the lake. If you look to the upper right, it shows you a little garden that could be created so that that water would enter that garden and be treated. That's the same, similar to what we wanna do at the outlets and similar to our artificial wetland, that that water gets treated before it's released, so. And we would work with homeowners. We would provide information on how to construct those. It's a very common practice. Now, a lot of our new subdivisions are installing these rain gardens, so it's very common today. And then, just, just so people have a feel for some of these things, we included just, you know, for your record, this is the actual grant, a copy of the grant from December 30th, 2015, for the $647,250. And this was, once upon a time, all on our website. This is, this is nothing new, but just to give everybody kind of a comprehensive package. This grant is good through January 1st, 2020. Not to say that we couldn't get an extension, but as of right now, we're scheduled to build the wetland in '19. This is the DASNY grant. This doesn't have an expiration. As you can see, we verified that through this email. This is a copy of the 2016 DEC letter regarding the dam, which we're gonna, when we meet with them, we'll be discussing the dam. We'll be discussing draining the lake, all the permitting requirements. That'll be the next step, once we get through the dissolution, is for the supervisor to sit up in meeting with the DEC and, and the same presentation that we have here tonight, we're gonna make the same presentation to the DEC, find out, you know, get their feedback, and hopefully a path to acquire the necessary permits. And that's pretty much what I have, so. Any questions?
Thank you, engineer. So as the engineer stated, this is pretty much the plan that we discussed last time. We tweaked a few things, but yesterday, I just wanna note that we met with Stephen Gruber from Renewage, myself, the engineer, the attorney. And we discussed the project and how we had some changes to the timeline and what else we could do to try and get more grants towards, for the Hillside Lake projects, because we know that this project, the DEC grant, only captures a certain percentage of the stormwater. So we discussed about other grants. We have till June to submit, to look for other grants, which we're currently doing, for water quality or economic stabilization grants, other things that we could fit into here. Whatever we could get, we wanna put towards that. Mr. Gruber was very receptive to all that, and he's ready to get going with the project as soon as we can. Like the engineer said, the DEC grant is good up until 2020, January of 2020. Our timeline has us doing it in '19. And once we go through the permitting process with the DEC, we'll see if we could get an extension if we need it. But that's an option we'll discuss with them at that time. The DASNY grant for the removal of the vegetation, like the engineer said, there is no expiration. And we wanted to get through two winters, I believe, to kill the vegetation.
Freeze cycles.
Right, or three cycles, rather. But the, the whole key for everything, obviously, is the dam removal. It's, it's high on our hazard mitigation list. The town knows that it's a hazard. We know we have to get rid of it. The DEC has said that they have concerns with it. We have some violations. And this is part of our plan with them, to show them that we have a plan to get rid of the dam and put a different control, water control structure in there. So everything will be discussed with the DEC, and hopefully they'll agree with us, so we can go forward with our timeline. Another key component to the whole project is our highway department. We're fortunate, our highway superintendent is willing to do whatever he can to help the town with this project, to do whatever they can. Like the engineer said, we discussed with Mr. Gruber yesterday the potential for our highway department to do the work for the DEC grant. He said that's possible, but we wanna make sure that we would get compensated for the work that we would do. We haven't discussed that yet with the DEC, but we will. The, like the, like I said, the highway superintendent is willing to help, and that's gonna keep our costs low. This is a living, breathing timeline. Like I've said it many, many times, and I'm gonna say it again. This is the project that we would wanna do with the timeline that we have shown. If something happens, if there's a catastrophe, if there's a big problem, knock on wood, there won't be, but this could affect the timeline. The town doesn't have a lot of financial resources to put to this all at once. That's why we have a long-term plan to do it. So I'm, I'm happy that we've had a very positive meetings with the Hillside Lake community, and they, they understand this. And I hope that the rest of the town understands that, too, that we can't devote all financial resources towards one project. We have a big town, and we have a lot of other problems throughout the town. So this is what we would like to see. And this is the plan, the amended plan that we will vote on to dissolve the park district with. With that, is there comments from the town board members?
First, I'd like to thank Scott for all your hard work on this. We really appreciate that. I'm sure the rest of Hillside Lake appreciates that as well. Well, from the onset, my biggest concern was us to be able to utilize these grants. And I'm glad that we're gonna be able to do that. So that's a big deal. And I think that in the future, looking for more grants to help us fix this problem would be very, very good for us. So I'm looking forward to that. But I think it's a very reasonable plan. I personally like it. And I hope, like you said, knock on wood, everything goes smoothly, and we can get this one step at a time, one year at a time.
Thank you, councilman. Gentlemen, any comments?
Got any comments?
Nope.
Basically, I think that this is a plan that, you know, we have discussed many times, even with the community. We're probably gonna have to hear some comments from community members. But I think it's a good plan, I, that the engineer put together. Possibly we'll follow along with the timeline and make sure that everything is done properly. I, I think the town board and the town officials are really embracing the project, so I am really happy that this project go forward. It's gonna be a great thing for the community. I personally think that compared to what we have there now, there is no comparison. So having said that, I don't know what comments we're gonna hear from the community, but I hope that there will be positive comments, and we will work with you through this process.
And I just wanna add, in the timeline, at some point, and we will have more information for all the homeowners in Hillside Lake about the Hillside Lake watershed protection ordinance to inspect the septic systems. Because we don't wanna do all this work and then, you know, have more problems in the future. So once we get our arms around when we're going to commence the project, then we'll have much more information about that new law. The town, we'll have, we'll have to have a public hearing for the town law, so it will be, it will be advertised, and there'll be much more information to come about that. But if anybody has some comments, please come up to the microphone.
I just wanted to say thank you all for your contribution and your efforts to put this all together, and hopefully we finally get something accomplished. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Ellen Smolinski. I just wanna thank you, Scott, for that really detailed presentation you just gave us.
Well, I had some help in my department, not just me. Like, you know, we had help, but...
It's up-down and up-key, you know.
Yeah, I had even helped with that today, yeah.
But thank you, thank you for, you know, stepping up to the plate and really, you know, I know, I know it's been a long process over the years, and I'm just very grateful that this is going forward and that you, you know, it's, it's a plan, and it's something that I think that Hillside Lake deserves the community. I wanna thank all of you for all the hard work you put into it and to all the times you listen to us, you know. And alls we wanted to do was to help get it fixed. And I think this is a plan, and I think it's good for the whole entire town. You know, this is, this could be a great, great asset for the town. And man, I wanna thank you for, you know, being our liaison for all those, for the past four years that you were councilman and always sticking by us and giving us good orderly direction and calming, you know, people down when it, when it was, you know... We didn't feel like being calmed down, you know. Felt a little bit like the redheaded stepchild. I honestly don't feel that way anymore. And I wanna thank you, Nick, for being so positive about this and backing us and giving us hope. So thank you so much. And also Tom and Pete, thanks for at least, you know, giving us some hope that this is gonna go forward. I hope that everybody votes on it, and I hope it goes forward. And I can't wait to see that lake dry up and all that water to be out and some of that raking start. And as time goes, I think we've had 25 years of it looking like this. I think three or four or five or six years of it being on repair and seeing work done up there. And thank Kenny for, you know, stepping up and wanting to help, too. I really feel encouraged. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kyle Austin, and we're new to the community, so I apologize for my ignorance. I was interested to know how this compares to or relates to the proposal that was voted down last November. Is it related to in any way? And the second question I had was about the swimming hole and the pros and cons that you guys thought through with that. It seemed like there might be some pros for a swimming hole or swimming area, but I'm sure you thought through that. And I was just interested to know what are the pros and cons and why it was eliminated. Thanks.
Okay, so the, the difference between this and what was proposed on the ballot last November. Last November on the ballot was a proposal to do a, a complete dredging and recreation type of facility there at the lake. That was, I should say, a hopeful grand plan that we would have loved to seen. And we said, if we're gonna do it, let's try and do it right the first time if we could get it approved. Obviously, it didn't get approved, so now we're at step two. Step two, the town board has had many meetings with the community in Hillside Lake. And the number-one message that we all received from the people there was that they really wanted the lake to look nice. They didn't care so much about recreation. They didn't care so much about walking paths. They, they wanted it to look good, so their property values would be increased, just like anybody else would. So we listened to that, and we came up with a plan that would be financially doable to the town. And with the help, with the highway department giving a large help here that keeps our costs down, this is the plan that we've come up with. So that's the difference there. Now, with the swimming area is directly related to the dam. Scott, can you answer that?
Well, there's, there's twofold. Before I get into the dam part, as far as the swimming area, you also have to keep in mind, for that to be a town swimming area, we'd have to have lifeguards on duty. It's not like the old days that you could just go use it. So that now the town's gonna incur that expense of having to have lifeguards, rescue equipment, training, all that. So it's not like it was in the old days. As far as, the other reason, primary reason, is we have two choices. We can either reconstruct the dam, which is, I mean, a lot of geotechnical engineering before you can even get started, because now you have to build it to today's standards, not what was built 50, 60 years ago, okay? So there's gonna be a lot of engineering. They won't be able to do in-house. That'll be a consultant. Then there's the actual replacement of the dam. So it's, you know, it could be $300,000, $500,000, $1,000,000 just right there. Easy, very easy. And the idea is, you're still left to do all that work to maintain a swimming area that now you have to put lifeguards, and you gotta put rescue equipment and all that kinda stuff. So, you know, the idea is that that's a very expensive proposition. If we just fill it in with good material from the lake, it can be a passive area, maybe a pavilion in the future or an area to picnic or something like that. a pavilion in the future, or an area to picnic or something like that. I mean, maybe at some point, we restore the dock area, and then it takes the dam replacement off the table. At least, that's the intent.
That was a consideration. One of the residents from Hillside Lake called me yesterday about keeping the swimming area intact. And I discussed it with the engineer, and the dam is a big problem for the town. So, in order to remove it and increase the earthen part, that would have to be done. So, it's more cost-effective also for the town.
In an effort to save time, I just want to emphasize all the thank yous that the previous people that came here and said, "Thank yous to everyone for getting this done in such a timely manner after seven or eight years of myself personally," I don't know, other people before me even, "trying to get something that looked like this that gave us some hope and gave us something that looks like it's solid and it's moving forward." So, again, thank you, everyone, for that and for putting together such a clear presentation that really explains it all. I have nothing negative to say on this. I'm just asking some questions as I come along here to fill in some blanks. And probably Scott would have the answer to these. For the sediment baffles in the catch basins, are you talking about putting them in the existing catch basins or only the deep sump?
We would put one in that sump that we put in about two years ago, I think it was. We would install one there, and then we're looking at adding new structures with deep sumps.
You're going to add more deep sumps?
Right. We're not exactly sure whether it'll be down by the outfall or up on the street. You know, we have to identify where, but that's the intent, is that for each outfall, you'd have this kind of on the inlet side, the deep sump with the screen, and then on the outlet side, we'd have that little micro wetland entering the lake.
So, not in the existing catch basins, for lack of a better term? You wouldn't do anything in those?
I don't anticipate that unless, I mean, I haven't looked in every basin. If there's a basin that lends itself to this, certainly, we would use that, but...
And I see that those are only proposed for 2020, when those would actually...
Yeah, we're actually going to try to see if we can get a grant for those as part of water quality.
So, that's why it's pushed out?
So, we're going to try to get a grant for this, we're going to try to get a grant for those micro basins.
Where do you, were you planning on putting the gravel wetland filters? Were they at the outfalls? Or is that referring to...
The large one or the small one?
Or is that referring to renewalage? On page, like, three or something?
Let me see if I can go back here and just tell me which one you're talking about.
Third page.
This one here, or are we talking about this one?
No.
Yeah, that was that one.
It's right after the one that you had on the micro wet basins, and then talk about the catch basins.
Slide eight, you're talking about slide eight?
No, it's not really page, I guess not page three. It's one, two, three, four, five.
Yours is different, but...
Yeah.
Eight?
Gravel wetland where it shows the section view of it.
Right. That goes near the beach area.
So, that's the renewalage thing?
Yes.
It's not additional ones that you're putting around?
No.
Okay.
The additional ones are the ones shown on five.
Okay. Okay. In the renewalage project, there is water getting pumped, clean water being pumped to the other side of the lake.
It's being pumped from the far side into the filter, yes.
Which requires, obviously, some kind of electricity for a pump?
Yes.
How will that be funded?
Well, this will be owned by the town.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear. And, I see you also have the removal of the highway sediment for 2020 as well.
Yes.
We have a grant for that already, don't we? Hundred and...
No, it's not a grant, we have a permit.
Okay, what was the 120, 170,000?
That's for vegetation.
That's the DASNE, yeah, vegetation removal.
All right, right.
Okay. So, you can't grab the, say, you're grabbing vegetation and go a little deeper and grab a...
It's possible, you know.
Well, Steven Gruber actually said that yesterday. He said, "You will make it a little deeper when you remove the vegetation, because when you go in there, it removes a certain amount of sediment."
Right.
On the project schedule, there's a lot of areas that are not filled in for a timeline. Items...
Shouldn't be.
13 through 16.
Well, if you look at the bottom...
At the bottom.
Oh, those are, so those are planned for all, okay.
Yeah.
At the end, okay. And as far as the east of the Hudson septic law, that has no relevance to Hillside Lake. We're not, we're not in that watershed.
No, but we would craft something similar.
We're using that as a model, as an example.
Right, okay. Because with the septic law, you have to think of the people that possibly don't have a year-round residence there. They might come up for summers. And to tell them they have to pump out, say, their 1,000-gallon tank for two people that live there for two months out of a year, is, you know, an expense that people don't need. And as well, I mean, if you're talking about any septic getting into the lake, just as a rough estimate, and I mean, you can say yea or nay, but I would think any septic system, leach field, that's 200 to 300 feet away from that lake, is not being conveyed into that lake by anything other than the stormwater conveyance system. So, it's kind of like telling us, everybody that's further away, that you have to do this, because we don't want it coming into the town's storm.
That's exactly what the D E P did. D E P didn't try to differentiate whether you got a summer home, one person, two person. They drew a line, they drew a boundary, and they said, "If you're in the watershed, this is what it's going to be." And it's a real straight, simple approach. No one's saying it's perfect, and, but we're basically going to try to follow in our footsteps, so...
Because obviously, you have the hill in Hillside Lake, and the other side of the hill drains the other way.
Yeah, there's an argument, you know, either way, but...
But obviously, you said you'll...
Yeah.
You'll be, you know, and I know it was discussed, oh, we drain that lake, maybe we'll see some...
Right, yes, yes.
Something that can be...
Because Steven Gruber even said that taking these steps to the D E C will enhance our ability to be considered for grants.
Other grants.
They're very much into getting the community buy-in.
Yep, yep. That was all I had. Again, thank you very much to everyone.
Thank you.
I'm a taxpayer. I don't live in Hillside Lake. You said that vote had nothing to do with recreation. That's recreation. I beg to differ with you.
Okay.
You did this, and you circumvented our vote, and you're doing the same thing, minus the picnic benches? Am I paying my taxes where I live for all this work? Because you know this ain't just going to stop. It's going to continue. Maintenance, maintenance men continue a downline until they get their little recreation area. Gardens, little fountains, that's not recreation? Are you using my tax money for another community when we said no, the community? And this was not on the website at all. I had to find out and come down here, because I had to follow the state, I had to follow the federal government, and now I got to follow you guys? I thought we voted. This is the same thing. Do anything you're changing is picnic benches, or maybe now going to get a swimming pool later?
You want me to comment, sir?
I'm going to make sure everybody in this place knows and who you are. I voted here, buddy. I paid my taxes. And something's going on, because most people don't even know. This is like some kind of secret meeting with your pals here?
No, sir.
No, sir, nothing, man. You just got in, and you got a raise, and now this is happening, man. How do you get a raise when you just got in? Who's voting for this stuff, huh? I'm a taxpayer, and I'm paying too much money, way too much. It's in all my bills, man, hidden. And when I go to the store, man, everything I do, I'm being popped, okay? And you want to build some luxury thing for this one place, man? Why, all these people there, they got no money? Is the grants going to cover everything, or am I going to pay my taxes for their fun?
No, we're trying to utilize our highway...
You're trying?
To utilize our highway department to do most of the work, sir.
And I'm paying for it.
We all, we all are, sir, yes.
Yeah. But I don't want to pay for it, that's why I voted. I don't want to pay for all this stuff.
Well, this is...
I'm fairly above water now, because 2.7% is not 2%. You guys raised stuff, and you gave yourself a raise. You guys keep on raising the stuff, and money is like nothing to you, right?
No, sir.
I got a limit. And you didn't, where was this stuff, anyway? The vote was about fixing this place and making it a rec area, and you just said, "We're going to own part of that."
Well, it's not going to be a recreation like the plan was.
It is recre, it's the same thing. You can use semantics all you want with the language. You're still fixing up the place so they can have a plus little area using our money. Not fixing up my area, pipe's breaking all the time. That's all I got to say, but thanks a lot, gang.
Why don't you stick around for a response?
Well, this is a different project from what we proposed in the November ballot. And I understand everybody is allowed to have their opinion, but this is the most cost-effective way for the town to help mitigate the lake problem with the dam problem. No matter what happens with the lake, the town still has a responsibility to fix the dam. So... No, that's, he's allowed to speak his mind, just like everybody else, Bob. But I want to be clear, so the public understands, that we went through this plan specifically to make sure that the town could do it in a long-term period, so we can afford it. And like I said, it's a living, breathing plan. If we have other problems, we might have to divert funds to something else that year. And hopefully, we don't have to. But with our highway department doing a lot of the work, we're going to save a lot, a lot of money. So, please, anybody else to ask comments?
I just would like to respond for the general public, who may be just viewing this on television, and anybody and everybody else that's here, is, I guess what the previous speaker doesn't realize is, this is predominantly about town stormwater and drainage that has, in fact, as we all know and have discussed in the past, has had an impact on the lake. And it is not, in my humble opinion, predominantly for recreation. You know, the, a lot of the sediment that has gone into the lake as a result of the storm sewer system is going into the swimming area. So, there's a savings there. Utilizing what flowed off of the streets from the sand and salt that's gone into the lake during the winter months, it's going into the, into the swimming area. So, I think it's a practical use of money. Certainly, I think to go ahead and remediate the existing dam would be an overwhelming expenditure. I think it would break people. So, and the previous speaker referred to the community. This is the East Fishkill community for his information. And I will thank you all again for your efforts and your attention.
I just wanted to add on that, and I think something that's really important about this, too, is that when you go into this area and you fix up this lake, it's going to increase the property values, which is going to be a benefit to the whole town. And I think that that's going to make the area more attractive, we're going to bring in more people, and so I think it's a win-win. It doesn't look like it in the short term, but when you look long-term, I think it's going to, it's going to be helpful for everyone in the town and for their taxes. Some, the main thing I wanted to ask, actually, was some questions mainly of the town engineer, and then I also wanted to ask the board a question, too. Just a question about the removal of the kind of the aquatic vegetation. So, is that done, is that going to be kind of all year, or is it during certain seasons? You mentioned like the winter...
During the dry, we'll freeze it in the winter months, and then we'll try to probably skip through the spring, it'll be wet. And the idea is in the summer months, July, August, to get in there with bulldozers with rakes and other equipment, and get in there and actually go in and remove it.
So, will the lake be fully drained, like, completely? And then, then the equipment goes in? And will it stay drained through that period, or does it refill?
We're kind of going to play that by year.
Okay.
Play that by year. They definitely want to go through a minimum of a couple freeze-thaw cycles. Whether we leave it continuously, you know, we'll play that by year.
And that's mainly going to be done by the firm renewalage? They're doing the...
No, we plan to do that in-house.
The highway department will?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I had was, most of the aquatic vegetation in there, is that, has the D E C even like mentioned that as being like invasive species? Is it local?
That, I can't answer.
You can't answer, okay. I can, I'll contact someone.
Yeah, but that's, that's one of the things we're going to be discussing with the D E C when we go to get our permits, though.
Okay, yeah, it's just something interesting, because like, as it's removed, sometimes invasives have a...
Well, they're going to want to know, they're going to want it studied, and there's a lot to it, yeah.
Okay. The last thing I was wondering is, I was thinking about the opportunity, when the lake is drained, for removing the vegetation. And obviously, it's a low impact of what this would do, but the opportunity for people to volunteer to come out. I mean, I know it's kind of like just a little pinch in the overall removal of stuff out of the lake, but I think it could be something to kind of bring people together. It's kind of a unifying thing in the town of, like, you could even bring in other nonprofits or other groups outside East Fishkill, Rotary Clubs, so forth, of something to kind of do together.
That's possible, and what Steven had mentioned, even, or actually, David Whitney, the engineer who designed the filtration, possibly having people come in, like you mentioned, to help, you know, with the maintenance of those little filtration basins and things of that nature. You know, on an annual basis, you know, maybe we have a day where Eagle Scouts or whoever and residents can come in, and we go do maintenance and something like that. I'm not quite sure how the vegetation removal might, because there's going to be equipment, and that may not lend itself, but I think the maintenance would be less...
Yeah, my only worry was kind of like with insurance things, if it like becomes an issue of people, you know, random people going into the lake and whatever, tearing out stuff or something, if that's like a problem. But, yeah, I just thought, I think people care the most about their environment when they feel attached to it. And one way to be attached to it is if you're interacting with it, not in terms of like a recreational space, but if people are brought together into trying to clean up this space, even if it's just a little thing...
Mm-hmm, it's possible.
It makes you feel closer to it, so, thanks.
I think also for, in that one slide, we talked about putting rain guards, rain gardens in your yard, so I think that's a way that the community can also pitch in and try to, you know, eliminate this at its source.
Yes.
So, you know, if you do have erosion on your lawn, or if there's anything you can do in your space to help minimize what goes downstream, that's a big help also, and you're participating. And we're going to help, we offer guidance and assistance, you know, in terms of the technical aspect of constructing those. You know, we'll follow up with that.
Okay, great, thanks.
I wasn't going to have anything to say, but after hearing that gentleman, I got a question.
Speed humps?
Yeah, yeah. So, is this written in stone that, you know, once it's agreed upon? What I want to know is if we have 50 irate people come in here around election time or whatever, or somebody that's going to, you know, in other words, once we're going to go ahead with it, there's nothing going to interfere?
This is the plan that the town board is proposing.
Right.
We will close the public hearing tonight.
Yeah.
March 22nd voting meeting, we will vote on the dissolution with the plan.
Right, okay.
And that's just like any other plan that we have in town for any other project.
Right. But, so, but what I'm saying is, once it's voted on yes or no or whatever, if it's a yes...
Yeah, we have to get permits, we got a lot, you know...
I understand that.
So, we can't just go for permits, and then we're going to stop the project?
No, I don't mean that, Nick.
You know...
I'm not saying that. What I'm asking is that if you get a mob of people in here...
Tonight was the night to get the mob of people.
Well, okay, well, then, so, give me the clarity. So, if you get a mob of people in here sometime later who start objecting to this, is it a done deal after it's voted on? That's what I want to know.
Yes.
It's a done deal.
Yes.
Nobody's going to, nobody's going to, 100 of these people are not going to influence anything.
This is why we have the public hearing.
That's what I want to know.
Yes.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of you as well. I really appreciate the huge difference between the tone and...
I wanna thank all of you as well. I really appreciate the huge difference between the tone and the amount of help that you're giving us as compared to only a few months ago. It's a huge difference. So thank you, Nick, because I think you're a big part of that change.
Oh, the whole board, though.
The whole board, but, you know, you're the one changed in the past few months. And in the past few months, this has really changed quite a bit. So thank all of you, but, you know, we really, I really appreciate it. And I know a lot of other people do as well. Just a quick response to the gentleman who spoke against this. I just wanna say that all the people who live on Hillside Lake are taxpayers in this town, too. And we've actually paid extra taxes because of the Park District for many years. And that money was available for the maintenance of the lake. And not a whole lot of maintenance, if any, was done with that money. So we've been paying extra taxes above the taxes that everyone else has been paying and watched our property values dive. My property's worth half of what it was when I bought it 13 years ago, when the lake was cleaner. I know that has to do with the housing market as well. But in order for my house to ever be worth what it was when I bought it, I definitely think that the lake has to be restored or partially restored, so that it's not, it doesn't continue to degrade. Because if it does, our property values are gonna continue to fall, no matter what the housing market does. Nobody wants to live on a swamp or a wetland, so. The other issue that he may not know is that it's been discussed in past meetings that developers in the area of the lake, whose housing developments also drain, the stormwater from those developments drain into the lake, were not charged fees that the town possibly could have charged them. And the board has blamed the town's planning board or zoning board or whatever in the past for that. But money could have been collected from those developments in order to help with these costs of their stormwater going into our lake and polluting our well water. And our well water is an issue. Renewage, who is going to carry out the grant that we got from the D.C., has said in meetings with us that, once the filtration system is installed, it will improve the quality of our well water, which means that the water in the lake is tied to the water table, which is where our well water comes from. So I did bring up in the last meeting, which has been brought up many meetings, that one of the pollutants, which is excessive road salt in our well water, needs to be addressed as well. And I don't know if you talked to the highway superintendent about that since the last meeting?
He already is putting the trucks with the metered trucks in the Hillside Lake.
In the whole area?
The main, on the main-
Taking on around the lake. The smaller roads, we cannot use the bigger trucks. But we are doing the medium, medium, and then the big truck now. We monitor and we sort it back.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because the Royal trucks can get to the smaller roads, why?
We have a 12-foot plow on the front. It's kinda hard.
And at night, in a snowstorm, I mean, Royal goes out there in good conditions, you know?
It would be hard for us, almost impossible, especially if we had an incoming car on the smaller roads.
And are there other materials that could sometimes be used, other than the chloride?
We use this sand and salt mixture as much as we can, because that cuts the salt down almost in half.
Ken, do you mind speaking in the microphone? Because nobody else is gonna be able to hear you out of your answers.
We've been using the sand and salt mixture more than we've been using the salt, so that it'll cut it down almost in half.
Okay, good. Because, I mean, as well as affecting our household pipes and fixtures, I'm sure that not all of the catch basin materials and all of the future materials that are gonna be used to filter the lake are not gonna be made out of things that the road salt is going to degrade as well. So that's something important, too, to invest money. And then have the road salt degrade. The equipment is not gonna, it's not gonna last long, so, thank you. And I'm sorry, Scott, when you did your presentation, I didn't catch what you said about what the blue dots versus the orange dots represent?
Blue dots are in the lake, and they're the microtreatment areas. Little rain gardens, so to speak.
And are all the catch basins gonna have those microtreatment?
The catch basins are on the land side, on the road side. The catch basins are on the dry side. And the little microbasins are on the lake side.
And the orange dots?
The orange are the catch basins.
Okay.
They may not fall exactly in those locations, but it's the concept.
Okay. And is the plan for the micro wetlands, as well as the Renewage project, to eventually filter 100% of the stormwater? Or, I mean, is there any idea of how much water is gonna be filtered in total?
If Renewage project would filter 25% of the water that enters the lake? And with the aeration and the pump system, the total would be bumped to about 50% of the water, okay? Our treatment at each outlet is basically like a first-flush treatment for the smaller events. If we get six inches of rain, they're designed just to let that water go through. So when you get that kind of storm, you're treating very little, because you gotta let that water pass. But for your common quarter-inch, half-inch rain, whatever that might be, it'll treat those small rainfalls.
So you said we're gonna continue to try to get more grants to filter more of the water?
That's right.
Okay.
And to try to get grants for all the rest of the project, whatever we can.
Because as Renewage has said, it does affect the quality of our well water. And I know I've spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to make sure that my drinking water is safe to drink. So I don't know that everyone can afford to do that. It took me 13 years to afford to be able to do that. I just recently did it. Before that, I was carting in bottled water, which is not fun and also expensive. So, you know, not filtering 100% of the water is costing the residents a lot of extra money. So the more water that the town can filter, the better, because we're still paying for the stormwater issue if it's not 100% filtered. So I hope that can-
Clean water is high priority in the towns. Anything for clean water, the town loves to do. Obviously, the EPA water line that we're getting, we're getting funded by the EPA for the water line for the Hopo Precision site, those people had, I don't know how many years, 25 years, that they waited for clean water. They had polluted water. They paid for bottled water. And thank God, we got that grant. So we will apply for whatever grants that we can, always.
Okay. And another thing that's been mentioned in past meetings is the possibility of putting a certain type of fish, I believe it was a certain type of carp, into the lake, which would help control the regrowth of the lily pads and whatever other vegetation is in there. I'm just wondering if, it seems like that would be a good idea, because we're not dredging the lake deep enough, I think, to avoid that from growing back. So maybe if we use some other natural things, like the fish, to keep it under control, it would also save money from the lake filling up again and having the same problem again. And I also wanted to know, when the lake is frozen in the winter, you said we're gonna wait until the summer to do the removal of the vegetation. Is it possible for the lake to be allowed to naturally fill back as much before the summer work is done?
No, it'll remain dry.
Okay, because as I mentioned at the last meeting, it does affect the water table and our wells, so.
We'll have to take that as a case-by-case basis and discuss that when that arises. We don't know what's gonna happen. We can't tell what the future holds. But we'll have to deal with that as a case-by-case basis. Tonight is strictly for the dissolution of the lake, of a park district.
Okay. Also, if we can't get anyone to take more material than what we're gonna use to fill in the swimming area, I would hope the board would consider past conversations about pushing it into the center, somewhere towards the center of the lake and creating an island, if that's possible. A lot of us did like that idea, if we can't truck it out. And also, I was wondering what's gonna happen to, I don't know how much is left in the Park District funds, but I was just wondering what's gonna happen to that money when-
Those dollars will get put into the general fund to help pay for whatever we're going to be doing there.
Okay. All right, thanks a lot.
Again, thank you to everyone who participated in this and helped. The first thing you need to establish is that watershed. And then you need to educate all the people in the watershed. In addition to the people in the watershed, we need to educate the whole town on how to maintain their septic system or their sewage system. Because I hear repeatedly pressure over on Queen Anne's Lane and that area and down in Lake City, that people are having trouble with their polluted waters or their backup on their septic systems or their sewer systems. So everybody, townwide, needs a thorough education on the septic system, the sewer system. And it might have to be house-to-house, you know, or community meetings of educating. That was all. And we did have lifeguards back as far as the 60s. I can remember that far back. Maybe I can't remember lunch, but I can remember. And they actually came in the 70s, 80s, and the early 90s. They came to my house for their equipment to work. So we did have lifeguards.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker.
Hi, we are new to the area. We bought our home in November. So I'm, we love Hillside Lake. And we've been very impressed with the condition and the quality of the roads, the area that we came from. I came from Connecticut. And I could tell you, the roads were nothing like that. So I know there's a problem with the salt and the sand, but being able to commute and get to work has been huge. Even the fact with a pothole forming, it was fixed right away. And then I just had a question. How deep is the lake? Do you know that?
Yeah, not very. It's about right, about three feet.
Really? Even in the center of the, it's only three feet? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you again, on behalf of Hillside Lake residents, for doing a great job of putting something together that gives us hope that we're moving forward. The gentleman who left failed to hang around and find out the other side of the story. But I think it's important that we keep in perspective, the town voted on a bond issue. It was over $3 million. That was a short-term project to create recreational possibilities in the town, do it quickly, with vendors, et cetera. What we're talking about here is nothing like that. It will have some benefits to the town, for sure, if we have a nice lake where people can boat and fish and ice skate and so forth. But a $600,000 project versus a $3 million project, I think you'd all agree, is night and day. So I think we need to make sure people understand that perspective. And it's over many years. So we're not talking about a big number here, but we are talking about a direction. And that's what I think the town wants to support, is bringing all of the areas of East Fish Gill up. And this will have that impact, for sure. And so I really appreciate your work. Look forward to seeing some progress. And really, thank you very much for listening to what we had to say. And I think you could tell from everybody that was here tonight, with the exception of one gentleman who didn't have the gumption to stay, that we're very pleased and that you've listened and that you've responded. The tone has changed. And I think you all see that. And we really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Anyone else like to speak, make a comment? No, I'd just like to add that, you know, we try to do the best we can with the dollars we have. One of our number-one problems is our roads. I discussed just today, yesterday, with the highway superintendent of getting a plan together to fix our roads, you know, quicker than we are. And it all comes down to dollars. And that's why this is a long-term project that we can't devote so many dollars to. So we do have other problems, and we are trying to address them. And we, you know, we do as good as we can with what we have. So I wanna thank all of our professionals, Scott, in your office, our attorney, the town board. Thank you for all your work with this project. And hopefully, it will be successful, just like all the other projects we do in town. With that, any other comments from the board? No?
Just, I wanna thank the community for coming out and voicing your opinion, whether it's in favor or against. We over here listen to everybody and take every comment into consideration. So we, having said that, I think that, like this project, we will embrace any other challenges that come our way. So I wanna assure that to the community. Thank you again.
Okay, with that, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Our next town board meeting is March 8th, 2018. It's our workshop. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Many seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting can't close, thank you.
Bring those kid.